May I have a roll call, please?
Trustees Forrester?
Here.
Markort?
Here.
Oppenheim?
Here.
Cook?
Here.
Schenk?
Here.
And President Byrne and Trustee Takaka gave prior notice that they would not be in attendance.
Okay, we'll be looking for a motion to appoint a chairman pro tem for this evening's meeting.
I'd like to nominate trustee Cook to be the chairman pro tem for the duration of the meeting.
And I will second it.
Roll call, please.
Trustees Markort?
Aye.
Forrester?
Aye.
Oppenheim?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
Schenk?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Would everyone please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Are there any citizens wishing to address the board on something that's not on the agenda? Because we'll be happy to let you talk about it when we get to it. Okay, hearing none. Then, as a part of the president's report, I have a proclamation for the Sewa-Dwali food drive, where Sewa is the act of selfless service embedded in the Indian culture, and Dwali is a Hindu festival that celebrates the victory of light over darkness. Over 50 Chicago-area-based Indian-American organizations join together to organize the Sewa-Dwali food drive to feed Lake County families in need in the spirit of Sewa. And from this effort, last year approximately 3,000 pounds of food were donated to the Vernon Township in support of those who are in need within our community. This year Vernon Hills residents are collecting food on behalf of neighbors in need and will be transporting donations in support of the Vernon Township Food Pantry. Through these commendable efforts, the true spirit of Dwali permeates the community, where diversity is one of our great strengths and inclusion is a commitment underscored by the mission statement of our village. We give thanks to the many individuals and organizations that are part of the 2022 Sewa-Dwali food drive. And now therefore be proclaimed that I, Tom Cook Jr., and as chairman pro tem of the village board and our board of trustees, do hereby express our sincerest appreciation to the organizers of this event for their selfless efforts and their commitment to the community. And we have somebody here to accept this, so would you like to come up and say a couple things? Sure.
You can speak.
Yeah, right there, yeah.
Yes, but you can do it later.
You can do yours later, yeah.
Okay. My name is Ketan Hattari. I'm resident of Vernon Hills and proud volunteer of Hindu Samak Sangha. I thank village president and respected board member for the proclamation. This really encourages us, your support, and encourages us to do some more good work for our community. Thank you. If you don't mind, like, I have a young volunteer who wants to speak a little bit about that.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Athar Vatali and I am in fifth grade at Hawthorne Elementary North and a proud volunteer of HSS and SEWA USA. On behalf of the 51 Indian-American partnering organizations, we wanted to say thank you to the village president and board members for recognizing our efforts. Seva-Dwali is an annual food drive conducted nationally in an effort to end food insecurity and give back to the community. Every year, starting from early October to early November, we collect non-perishable and canned food at local food drop-offs and then donate to local food pantries. As Dwali symbolizes lighting the lamp and positivity to get rid of the darkness, we hope to eliminate hunger by donating food to our communities. Throughout the year, we conduct many community events like Health for Humanity Yoga-Thon in January, where we do types of sun salutations, Surya Namaskars to make communities healthier. Teachers appreciation in May, thank our teachers for nurturing us to grow, and Retcha Bandhan in August to thank police officers and first responders for their protection and service. Through SEWA, meaning selfless service, we work on many projects like highway and drain cleanups, assisting in kitchens, and running other drives to help collect important items. Last year nationally, we collected over 600,000 pounds of food that include 19,000 from Chicago. And here in Lake County, we collected over 2,000 pounds of food and donated to Vernon Pantry. This year, we already donated 946 pounds of food to Midwest Veterans Closet Food Pantry. And next week, we will donate to Vernon Pantry. This Dwali, we strive to collect even more food and ensure that everyone's Dwali is truly filled with good health and prosperity. Thank you.
Thank you.
So let me give you this. This is the proclamation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. No, thank you for your service to the community. It's greatly appreciated. One other thing I wanted to add at this point. I was remiss last meeting not to mention it, but I wanted to mention the passing of Dr. Donald Gossett. Dr. Gossett was the superintendent at Libertyville 128 for more than 20 years, was a teacher there for a total of, well, he played there for a total of 33 years. Dr. Gossett was one of the people that was extremely responsible. He was one of the main reasons we were able to build Vernon Hills High School. When the enrollment was getting so much larger at Libertyville and the discussions were, do we build a new Libertyville campus somewhere? Do we just expand the current Libertyville campus? Or do we actually split it into two separate high schools? He was a visionary in spending four or five years at least before he retired in making sure that we got to a point where everybody understood the best thing for all the students in the area was to have our own high school here in Vernon Hills. And so Dr. Gossett was, you know, just an amazing person. And anybody who ever knew him over at District 128 knew that he always said he bled black and orange, you know, so... Because he was a great part of the community, so I wanted to make sure we mentioned that. Assistant village manager?
All right, looks like the slideshow's getting ready to load up. Here it is. All right, good evening. As the holidays approach, staff would like to provide an update on promotion and marketing efforts for our village during this key time of year. We will also share with the board Visit Lake County's marketing report for the village of Vernon Hills. Before each of you is the marketing partnership, which details how village venues and businesses were promoted during 2022. Visit Lake County supports our hospitality and restaurant sector and markets our community to those who visit Lake County for tourism, leisure, and business travel. As Vernon Hills is centrally located, our hospitality, retail, and restaurant sectors benefit greatly from those traveling to enjoy Great America, to the families who come from out-of-state to attend graduation at Great Lakes Naval Training Center, the business traveler, or persons looking for something new and fun to do on a weekend. Specific marketing during key periods that support our commercial sector include Restaurant Week, marketing of area businesses during the numerous sports tournaments held at the V-HAC, Bear's Summer Camp, and more. Holiday Your Way, as Black Friday is recognized as the beginning of the traditional holiday shopping season, which starts the day after Thanksgiving, this is a critical time of year for the many retailers within the village of Vernon Hills. Visit Lake County is not only a destination marketing organization for Lake County, it also directly supports 14 community partners, along with over 200 industry partners consisting of hotels, attractions, and hospitality-related venues in effort to increase awareness. As the holidays approach, during November and December, an annual promotion highlights holiday happenings. Promotion and marketing ads are created to support four communities. For this period, the campaign has been created for the villages of Vernon Hills, Libertyville, Gurnee, and Antioch. This campaign includes cross-channel promotion on broadcast media, plus focused targeting of video and display content directed towards persons seeking holiday activities that will be featured on social media. For Vernon Hills, our retail and commercial quarters will be highlighted by featuring restaurants, attractions, and shopping opportunities in Vernon Hills. This campaign, titled Holiday Your Way, will include Google Display Ads, social media features to include Facebook and Instagram ads, print ads in the Chicago Tribune and Daily Herald, custom e-blast, and radio ads on WSHE 100.3 FM, WDRV 97.1 The Drive, WOJO, and Spotify. The primary geographic areas targeted will include Lake County and the Chicago metro market. This campaign will run from the last week of November through December 23rd and is designed to increase interest, awareness, and ultimately visitation for participating communities. In addition, village staff recently had an opportunity to network with students at Vernon Hills High School. We would like to thank Ms. Lynn Benson, the department supervisor for career and tech education, for connecting with village staff to see if there were any opportunities for real-life students to showcase their skills and what they have been learning. Students in Mr. Adam Lukin's computer science class and in Ms. Carolyn McDonald's marketing class are generating ideas to help improve the village website as well as market the village's hospitality sector. As the board will recall, during 2020, an Instagram page was created to help promote Vernon Hills restaurants struggling due to restrictions. This page was named Experience Vernon Hills and is still utilized to showcase restaurants and venues that comprise the village's hospitality sector. To help the page connect with new viewers, we have challenged students to create content that features Vernon Hills restaurants, shopping, and entertainment areas. Students have already created thumbnails for this page, which are seasonal and seen here. The work we are featuring was created by Vernon Hills High School students Courtney Aglinica and Peyton Self. As the holidays approach, we hope to receive some additional content created by our student influencers that further promote and create awareness of Vernon Hills venues that ultimately encourage visitors to shop, dine, and experience Vernon Hills. So at this time, we would like to wish everyone a safe and enjoyable holiday season, and we look forward to the marketing efforts of our student influencers at Vernon Hills High School as well as Visit Lake County for their promotional efforts of our hospitality sector.
And we have our ceremony at the golf course coming up a week from Saturday, right?
Saturday, a week from this Saturday?
Yeah.
Yes, a week from this Saturday, so it'll be, yeah, what's it due on that? 26, 4:30 PM at the Muni.
Okay.
Yep.
How long has Visit Lake County been active in this?
I can look into that.
It's been a while?
Yes.
Oh, it has? Okay, good. I never meant to, I never thought to look on their website. I'm just looking right now on the holiday guide. It's great. Do we promote that on our website? Do we have a link or anything?
So I would say more so on social media. You know, they also do a, I would say, an internal assessment of what gets the most play. And I have shared some of that in the transmittal. I can share more of the content. The social media apps appear to be the greatest reach or the target. They can identify specific audiences they want to hit, and they know the content gets delivered. So not to say the traditional media is not as effective, but I have listened to some of the stations featured here, like The Drive, and I do hear the content, but I think when they use the social media apps, and they have several, they're on all of them, they target it, and you do see that. So if you go to Visit Lake County, I believe there's even a TikTok account now. You can see the content that shows up.
You have a TikTok account?
I do. For work-related purposes only.
Right, right.
By the way, I thought Black Friday had been officially moved to November 1st, the day after Halloween. I thought it was... At least it seemed like it.
Okay, just based on experience, what you've seen? Yeah, so it should be a great campaign. So I am a director on the board for Visit Lake County. And I'll say that I think, you know, as they mentioned previously, our contribution, I believe, is under $14,000. And, you know, for the bang for the buck, I would say they're very effective. We're one of the 14 community partners that comprise the organization. And I would say that they give a significant amount of their time and content dedicated to this village. I think they recognize the region that we're in. We're central. And if you've ever been out lunchtime on a Friday, you'll see, like, the families from Great Lakes. They do find their way down here. Obviously, during the holidays, you see the stores packed, which is a good thing. During Bear's Summer Camp, it was awesome to see all the people, not only before, but after the practices and all the Vernon Hills restaurants. There were lines of people wearing the colors, and it's just awesome to see. And I think a lot of that content, they're able to see where the people are coming from. They're able to target them and influence them to stay in Vernon Hills after the venue. So I think it's a very impactful organization. And for the bang for the buck, I think we're getting our money's worth.
Good, good. Thanks. Anybody else on staff have a speaking part tonight? Let me take a moment. You don't have to stay for the whole meeting. You may if you wish, but, no, Dave, you have to stay. But the people who got the proclamation don't have to. I always like to make sure people don't think they have to stay for the whole meeting. So the next would be omnibus vote agenda?
Yes.
Correct? Okay, and so item I is being polled. So the omnibus would be items A through H and J through L. Is there a motion to approve those items?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, motion a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Markort?
Aye.
Forrester?
Aye.
Oppenheim?
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook?
Aye. Motion carries. Item I was pulled.
Sure. The reason we pulled this, if we can add to the motion a waiver of competitive bidding, we can then, you can make the motion to approve. Just simply add a waiver of competitive bidding and approval.
Okay, so it would be approval and passage of ordinance 2022-122, an ordinance authorizing approval of expenditures to Moro Brothers Ford for the purchase of three Ford utility interceptors in an amount not to exceed $126,825, and put in a wave of competitive bidding?
Correct.
Is there a motion to that extent?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion a second. That's all, that was the only clarification?
The only clarification.
Okay. All right. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Yeah, I guess. Is Moro Brothers Ford the only place to get these interceptors? Where did that come from, do you know?
We actually had ordered, I'll just start by saying, we actually had ordered vehicles earlier in the year through another dealer. All of the orders were canceled. We were amongst, I believe about 100 police departments have been scrambling to try and get vehicles ordered so that we could receive them this budget year. I know Dave's staff has worked closely with my staff to find this source. And Director Brown, do you have any further on?
Maybe just paralleling with the chief said. You may recall before this current budget year, we came before the board and asked if we can order them in advance because we have problems with receiving the vehicles. So in March, you approved, and we moved forward right away ordering them. They were canceled September of this year, and we did not have time to order the new 2023s because they notified us two weeks after the orders were newly to be placed. So those two memos went in the opposite direction. So anyway, Moro Ford does have, they're a very large supplier. They bought extra inventory. They have openings available for whoever can get their orders in by Monday. And we hope that you approve this so we can be one of them. The chief's been waiting for a long time.
Okay. Yeah, I would say this is an exception to how we would normally purchase vehicles. It's what the whole world's heard about buying new vehicles, and these are, you know, of course, you understand these are specialized vehicles. We cannot just go to buy Ford Explorers off the lot. These are specially-made police vehicles. And unfortunately, our normal competitive bidding process just didn't work for us this year.
Okay, yeah, I just saw that they're in Greenfield, Illinois. I was just wondering, how did you end up going to a place in Greenfield, Illinois with all the car dealerships right around here?
Yeah, you'll find that these dealers, there's a handful throughout the state that bid competitively to get the police business, and they will handle hundreds of vehicles. So most of our vehicles, most of our police vehicles, aren't really purchased locally. They're purchased from these dealers that are bidding against one another and usually goes through a state bid process and a competitive process that we just buy onto. Unfortunately, this year, it's just been really tough on us, and we are kind of in a bind right now.
So are we paying more now for these?
We are paying more. So we would have liked to have bought four vehicles this year. We're going to buy three vehicles this year to leave a little cushion in the budget instead of buying four and going over budget. And probably next year, when I present the budget, or in a couple months when I present the budget, you'll see us try to make up some ground on that.
Okay.
We'll typically still get the discounts, the standard discounts that you would, but we're not going to get the manufacturer discounts. So that might add $5,000 or $6,000 per vehicle, so $18,000 approximately. But that's the market where we're at right now.
Being the automobile business, it is a tough one. I used to do bidding, gosh, we used to supply all Niles's cars going back in the day. But it's become more of a competitiveness, and now too, it's the lack of vehicles. And it's been tough for even in the aspect of public works, for vehicles, for plow vehicles. It's been very difficult, very difficult.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions? We have a motion and a second, correct? So roll call, please.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Markort?
Aye.
Forrester?
Aye.
Oppenheim?
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook?
Aye. Motion carries. Unfinished additional business, approval and passage of ordinance 2022-123, an ordinance authorizing an agreement with Illinois County's Risk Management Trust to provide insurance coverage for the policy year December 1, 2022 to December 1, 2023 for an amount not to exceed $357,674.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you recall, at our October 18th committee of the whole meeting, our insurance representative from Alliant Insurance Services presented our upcoming insurance policy premiums for the year beginning on December 1st. So that was discussed at that meeting. At the time, the only thing we were missing was premiums for our cyber liability coverage. Since then, we've been able to secure those premiums. The slide in front of you, if you recall, was presented, and this was meant to give an overview of the insurance marketplace and what we're seeing with the different lines of coverage. It was noted that the cyber policies right now are seeing more significant increases than other lines of coverage due to changes that are happening right now in network security and the cyber world. So we were anticipating a larger-than-typical increase. We did get a premium renewal. I'll note first and foremost that our cyber liabilities are the smallest line of coverage. So it's only $8,400 currently. We were hit with an 89% increase, which is a large increase as a percentage, but fortunately, overall, the dollar amount is just about under $7,500. So when you include that with our overall policy premiums for the year, we're looking at about a 5% increase year-over-year. So if there's any questions on the cyber coverage, I could be happy to answer those. Otherwise, staff would be looking for approvals of ordinances for items one and two.
Not that it really matters, but do you know how the actual dollar amount compares to other communities? I saw the previous slide said the rate of increase, ours is much higher than...
I don't have any...
We're the top tier there, but...
Yeah, I don't have any dollar information on what other communities are paying. I can certainly look into that with our broker and see what other clients are experiencing. You know, we're generally on the smaller side of municipal, you know, clients, so our exposure, I think, is less, is more limited than others. But I could certainly get more background information on that.
All right, thanks.
Can you go back to that, or go forward again?
Sure.
Please. So the building values, the change between 2022 and renewal, what accounts for that?
A lot of that was being driven by increase in building materials. So in other words, if we experience a loss of a property, the cost to rebuild or reconstruct is much greater now than it was a year or two ago.
Any other comments or questions?
So what's our total renewal premium increase?
Yeah, so the total renewal is 5% or about 4.5% when you round down. So we're looking at $831,437. That's all lines of coverage. We have it broken down into the two ordinances. So the first ordinance is everything but our workers' compensation, and item two is just the workers' compensation.
Do you want them voted on separately?
Yes, please.
They have to be, yeah, that's what I thought. Okay.
Did we add more staff, or is that just because of annual COLA increases on the payroll line?
COLA, yeah. No increase to position count.
95 employees, am I correct? Somewhere in there?
Yeah, right now, I think, the last time we looked, we were hovering around 98.
Okay, other comments or questions? If not, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion a second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Forrester?
Aye.
Oppenheim?
Aye.
Schenk?
Aye.
Markort?
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook?
Aye. Motion carries. The other item is the other half of that. Approval and passage of ordinance 2022-124, an ordinance authorizing an agreement with the Illinois County's Risk Management Trust to provide workers' compensation insurance coverage for December 1, 2022 to December 1, 2023 for an amount not to exceed $473,763.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Schenk?
Aye.
Markort?
Aye.
Forrester?
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, so new business in communication. First item there is approval and passage of an ordinance 2022-116, an ordinance authorizing approval of expenditures to Sutton Ford for the purchase of one 2023 Ford F-550 in an amount not to exceed $61,656 and 60 cents?
Yes, and if I, with your approval, I'd like to talk about both 2022-116 and 117, and obviously you'll hold on to separate. It really ties into what the chief and I had described before. In terms of the 116 ordinance, that's really the chassis for a one-ton pickup that we're trying to purchase. That one, Attorney Ferrell probably also wants you to add a comment on wave competitive bids for that also. The second one, the 117 ordinance, is it's the equipment that goes with it. So it's the plow, it's the dump body, spreader, controls, and that part of it. That is competitively bid. It's bid through Sourcewell. It used to be called NJPA. We've purchased through that cooperative before, but that's competitively priced, so we do not need to wave competitive bids on that. Just a brief summary, it's been real difficult purchasing vehicles. I won't delay a lot of your time as far as going into it. We've all experienced it. Within the automotive world, it's just supply chain issues, microchip issues that we're struggling with. So it's very hard to find vehicles. Again, we try... Again, we tried to buy this through Northwest Municipal and they closed the contracts. They were not taking any more orders. So we went out to Sutton Ford, who typically is one of the bidders. They do have the vehicle available. Again, similar to the police vehicles, they are able to offer the manufacturer's discounts, but, I'm sorry, the standard discounts, but not the manufacturer discounts. So we do recommend that you approve ordinance 116 and 117 and please add wave competitive bid on the 116. Thank you.
Okay. Comments or questions? Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2022-116 adding the wave competitive bidding?
Second.
Motion is second, if there are no other comments or questions, roll call, please.
Trustee Forrester?
Aye.
Appenheim?
Aye.
Schenck?
Aye.
Markort?
Aye.
Chairman Protam Cook?
Aye, motion carries. And the second item is approval and passage of ordinance 2022-117, an ordinance authorizing approval of expenditures to Banal Industries for the purchase of one 2022 Complete Ultimate Snowfighter Package in an amount not to exceed $66,769.95.
Motion, oh.
Go ahead.
I just have to say this, I love the name of this. Motion to approve the 2022 Complete Ultimate Snowfighter Package. That's on the record, right? Not to exceed $66,769.95.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
Yeah, it is good, Complete Ultimate Snowfighter Package, yeah. Okay, we have a motion and a second. If there are no comments or questions, roll call, please.
Trustee Appenheim?
Aye.
Forrester?
Aye.
Schenck?
Aye.
Markort?
Aye.
Chairman Protam Cook?
Aye, motion carries. Any other new business or communication anybody on board has? Trustee Schenck?
Uh, yes, so last week Vernon Township voters voted in a mental health seven, Illinois 708 Board, which is a, an Illinois statute that allows funding to be directed towards a mental health board in Vernon Township. And these funds can be used to help alleviate a lot of the pressures that are going on in our communities with mental health. I do know that they have about 60 days to help to appoint the mental health board. So if you are a mental health professional, have any experience in this and willing to volunteer, contact Vernon Township to apply and that's how this board gets started. Funding doesn't start, I think, till the 2024 or 2023 property tax levy? I can't remember what it is, but the first step is to create the board. And to have more mental health professionals on this board or anyone associated with that, contact, I would contact Vernon Township. This is a good thing for our village. We've been, Kevin and I have been working on a mental health committee with District 128 for the last several months and it's coming along good to help our, help our community. And this is one of those things that might be able to help fund what we've been working on too, so.
Okay. Anybody else, any new business or communication? I have one thing, I, earlier this evening before coming here, I attended the College of Lake County Trustees, Trustees Board of Trustees meeting, which was held down at our South Lake campus here in town. And things are going really well for the college in general, I mean, across the board. South Lake's numbers have made a significant comeback since the COVID pandemic. The new tech center up by Gurnee is, is amazing. The Lakeshore Campus in Waukegan has been, you know, completely renovated and everything like that. So CLC is, I think Dr. Joe Biden said it best, that Community College is one of the best kept secrets in this country. And it was also interesting to note tonight that the highest percentage of students based on zip code, Vernon Hills is number one. And also amazing to find out that they're by high school, one of their, their, their new leading promo, leading high schools sending them students is Stevenson. So it's good that people are discovering that Community College is a, is an outstanding way to go. So CLC had, they had a lot of good news at the meeting tonight.
Trustee Cook, following up on that, myself and Director Andrew Jennings were invited by Lake County Partners up to the center in Gurnee and will echo that. They commented on the connection to Vernon Hills and they connected on, or they touched on what you said about it being an amazing opportunity for area students, but they did comment on the numbers coming from this community up there. The facility is amazing. You think about what a classroom is, everything is in person where they're teaching robotics, they're teaching engineering, they're teaching assessment of instruments. And it's just an amazing facility this close to home. They talked about how people can go from high school right there and within two years be certified in a specialty. And they talked about the money that people are making in these fields without having to go to a traditional four-year school. So it is a great opportunity. We encourage anybody interested, they can meet with us and we can connect them to the college or they can just go to CLC and get the tour as well.
Yeah, and down here at, at South Lake, they have two real good programs. One's in pharmacy and the other one is the health and wellness program that they have down here is, is a, an excellent program.
Absolutely. We're very fortunate to have them here in Vernon Hills too.
Anything else under new business communication? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, we are adjourned and we'll go to Committee of the Whole, back to you.
All right, we'll call to order the November 15th, 2022 Committee of the Whole meeting. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustees Forrester? Here. Markort?
Aye.
Appenheim?
Here.
Schenck?
Here.
Cook?
Here.
And President Byrne and Trustee Takaoka have given prior notice that they would not be in attendance.
Okay, is there a motion to appoint a Chairman Protam for this evening's committee meeting?
I'd like to nominate Trustee Cook to be the Chairman Protam for the duration of the meeting.
Second it.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Schenck?
Aye.
Forrester?
Aye.
Markort?
Aye.
Appenheim?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye. And motion carries. Our first item is the minutes of the November 1st Committee of the Whole. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments, questions, corrections, additions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Markort?
Aye.
Forrester?
Aye.
Schenck?
Aye.
Appenheim?
Aye.
Chairman Protam Cook?
Aye, motion carries. Next item is the, speaking of the College of Lake County, CLC sign amendment for the new sign at the South Lake Campus.
Thank you. The College of Lake County has applied for a sign permit to replace a couple of the signs at South Lake Campus. The existing sign, these two here, was granted a variation in 2009 for total sign area. The variation allowed it to have a sign area of 132 square feet, whereas the code allows up to a 50-square-foot sign for a monument sign like this. The sign permit they've applied for would actually be significantly smaller than this sign, a total of 90 square feet. But as the original variation ordinance was specific to the design of this sign, in order to issue a new permit, we do need to amend the ordinance to reference a different sign design. So with that, there is a image of the new sign. Also has an EMC, an electronic message center integrated into the sign, into the sign cabinet. I have a representative of the sign company here tonight, Jeff Farmular from North Shore Sign is here to answer any questions you might have. But what we're looking for is direction to prepare an amendment to the 2009 ordinance that would be placed on a upcoming omnibus agenda to allow this design to replace the design referenced in the previous ordinance.
So actually to make it, it, it's a smaller sign than the existing one, but because it's still above code, it requires its own variance?
That's correct. And, and the mechanism for doing that in this case, I'm suggesting just amending the, the previous ordinance to, to reference this new design.
Any comments or questions from the board?
Is it brighter than the previous signage, the LED? Or is it about the same lumens or however you guys measure that?
Yeah, please, if you could. And state your name and, you know.
Hi, I'm Jeff Farmular with North Shore Sign Company. To answer your question on the lumens, I can't be sure if it is, but the newer signs nowadays have dimmers.
Right.
So as the clouds move in, even during the day, the sign will dim. And they are manufactured to meet, I say most, if not all, of the municipality standards here in the state of Illinois. We've not had any issues with it being too light or too bright. But yeah, the technology, you know, the LEDs are much better than they were 10 years ago. And this is a better resolution sign as well. This is a 10-millimeter resolution. I'm not 100% sure what's out there now, it's probably 19 millimeters. So it's gonna be a real welcome addition to the campus.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, then is there a motion? We want a motion to direct staff to?
Directing staff to prepare an ordinance amending the 2009 ordinance to replace the, the sign design with the current design.
Okay. Is there a motion to that extent?
A motion to that extent, that was a mouthful.
Second.
We have a motion to second and in full disclosure, I'm a member of the Advisory Board for the South Lake Campus, so I want to put that out there. Okay, there are no more comments or questions, a roll call, please.
Trustee Forrester?
Aye.
Schenck?
Aye.
Markort?
Aye.
Appenheim?
Aye.
Chairman Protam Cook?
Aye, motion carries. Okay. Next item is Lakeview Parkway update?
So John Vanna is here from Civil Tech Engineering to provide an update on our Lakeview project. We are hoping to acquire the one last parcel so we can move it ahead for a January bid letting. We're not certain whether we will accomplish that goal. If that doesn't happen, we will shoot for the March bid letting instead, but it'll still keep us on track for constructing the project still this approaching summer. So John's gonna touch base on a number of things, reminding everyone at home what the project entails. And we also, like everything lately, are hitting on some, some budget constraints. So John will update us in terms of the budget too. Ultimately, we need to construct this project and there is a Phase 3 engineering, so resident engineering contract that we need to sign, a consultant with my departure and helping with the transition. My recommendation is that we would bring before the Village Board at the December 13th meeting a contract for resident engineering services. So I just wanted to preface that also, that we would present something on December 13th.
Which is not something you're, we're.
Well, so we won't vote on that today, we'll bring it to the next meeting.
Okay, thanks.
Good evening, everybody. My name is John Vanna, I'm with Civil Tech Engineering, I'm our Director of Design Services. So yeah, I'm here to update you on a project we, I've been working on for a long time. I think I didn't even have gray hair in my beard when we were working on this in the beginning. But the, the project will widen resurface, Lakeview Parkway at Illinois Route 60 and Hawthorne Parkway. Those two intersections are very closely spaced and there's a lot of congestion with the traffic movements there. And this project is going to greatly improve the movement of vehicles and pedestrians through these two intersections across Route 60, through the addition of additional through lanes, turny lanes, geometric modifications and also pedestrian facility improvements too. The project, the project does have a long history. The current concept was funded with federal STP funds, federal grant funds back in 2018 through the Lake County Council of Mayors. One of the reasons that getting to construction has taken quite some time is because the council did not have the funding available until their fiscal year 2023. And over the five years since it was programmed, you know, as, as Dave mentioned, construction costs have considerably increased over time. We have continuously worked with the Lake County Council of Mayors, keeping them aware of the fact that the project is not fully funded at the 80% level that the STP program normally would provide. The, the Lake County Council of Mayors did have some available funding that was directed to the project in 2021. It increased the federal share by $108,800. The project's plans and design has gone through all of the IDOT approvals. Final plans were submitted on October 3rd to the IDOT for a bid opening, which IDOT calls their letting in, in January of 2023. So all of the right-of-way parcels, there were six parcels, have been acquired by the village except for one, like Dave mentioned, and that needs to be in place and acquired by the end of the month to stay on the January IDOT letting. If it does take longer to finalize that acquisition, we would probably, we'll have to move to the March IDOT letting, which really is not a terrible thing. They're still gonna have enough time to complete the improvement substantially within the 2023 construction season, so. Currently, IDOT is reviewing two agreements, draft versions of agreements right now. One is the local agency agreement and that's the mechanism for funding between IDOT and the village. And then there's the construction engineering agreement that Dave mentioned. And the construction engineering is also funded at 80% federal share, 20% village. And we're anticipating that those will be actually approved by IDOT and ready to sign by the village at, like Dave said, the December board meeting. And from there, once we get the right-of-way, we'll, we'll move ahead and we're almost to the finish line, so.
Comments or questions from the board?
Who's the holdup? Or the holdout?
How would you, yeah.
Can you? Are you allowed to say it?
The property is 175 East Hawthorne Parkway, the Republic Bank Building. We're just working on some final, final language for the closing documents.
So if it goes to March, what, versus January, what, what are we risking, the construction season to get it done?
You'll still be able to build it during this construction season in 2023, despite any other material shortages that have been going on. Jim, Jim, yours is our Director of Construction Services in the back, if, if there's any questions too. But you know, IDOT has multiple lettings throughout the year and depending on the project, it's ideal to target certain ones versus others. January is, is a good letting to target because contractors are trying to fill their, their dockets for the year and, and get busy. But then there's still enough interest and capacity in the industry to, to provide plenty of interest for the March letting. So it's really just you're, you're delayed by a couple of months with the January letting. You would be able to start maybe a little bit sooner, assuming weather cooperates, but the March letting doesn't really put you that far behind in itself. The, the March letting is early in the month, the January is in the later part of January. So it's not two months delayed.
We'd like that it adds the schedule a little bit in case the utility companies and some unforeseen items to make sure we do complete it within one construction seasons. We also bid out our annual MFT program in January to try to get the best pricing also, so that's our target.
Yes, a project we've been working on for a while, right?
Yes.
Yeah, this, this project, the genesis of this project was extending Fairway Drive from Route 45 to the, through the Nike base. That was the beginning of this project.
Yeah. Any other comments or questions from the board? So we'll have the, the contract thing next, next meeting?
Yes, we will, we will present. That, I, I really do want to touch a little bit on the, the budget just to be upfront with the board, where, where we're at in dollar amounts. So really, the construction phase costs have increased by $516,000. So it is a increase. So it is a increase. We are talking with the Council of Mayors. Why we're not accessing, you know, it's 80/20 match, but there's a cap on how much money the council provides. So we still have an opportunity to have discussions with the council. If other, other projects come in better, they have more money, we might be able to access the additional funds. But at this point in time, that's where we're at with the budget. So we are $516,000 in the wrong direction. So I just wanted to be upfront with the board on that.
Would these projects be in tandem? Would you, would you do both these rehabs in tandem with each other at the same time, then? Like you're doing the intersection at Lakeview and 60? And then are you, you're improving the Fairway and 60 section, too? Or is it just the Lakeview intersection?
Yeah, so I can help with that. So really what this project is, is starting at the post office on Lakeview, we're resurfacing up to Philip Road by the police station. From Philip Road going north, we'll cross Route 60. We'll go to Hawthorne Parkway and almost to Center. That's more of a widening project. So we're gonna be doing all of that as part of this project, and we're accessing the county funds. For a typical paving annual program, we would pay 100%. In this case, from the Philip Road to the post office, it's being resurfaced, and someone else is paying 80% of that. So it's, it's still a good deal. It's just, I'm very budget-conscious, so I wanted to share.
Sure. I just noticed you have, like, the Fairway and 60 highlight down there, too.
So this exhibit that I show up here was actually an exhibit that we use as part of a Federal Highways Administration meeting. And so that piece of Fairway Drive and the resurfacing that you see there was included as part of the Phase 1, Phase 1 of the improvements. But what happened is, is the village hired Civil Tech to actually kind of reinvent this project and go back and look at updated traffic and be sure that we're spending the money in the best, most effective way. And then that's when we were, the focus really turned to the intersections up at Lakeview and 60 and Hawthorne. And then, like Dave described, the balance is resurfacing from Fairway to Philip and then from Hawthorne to Center.
It was presented to a previous board as far as whether we should ultimately build all of Lakeview and all of Fairway. At that point in time, the traffic counts were down. The businesses in the business park, some of them had closed their doors. So the decision was not to move forward with the Fairway Drive portion. The good news is, Civil Tech has already prepared some of the initial Phase 1-type documents. They would have to be refreshed, and but it'll be interesting when the mall moves forward with some more residential. We may want to revisit Fairway Drive and allow that to work better. It helps us by more people using Fairway Drive rather than maybe Deer Path.
And are there some additional lanes in that involved, and is correct, or turn lane, or that, or, I mean?
There are, yes. That's correct. So up at, up at Lakeview and 60, we've got an additional through lane capacity. There's additional left-turning capacity. You, you can also see up at Hawthorne. The geometrics have basically, basically been widened so that vehicles can flow more smoothly through those intersections with the new lanes.
Other comments or questions from the board?
So will we be able to add a pedestrian crosswalk at Fairway and 60?
If?
In the future?
At Fairway and, and Lakeview, or are you?
So there, there's already a crosswalk at Lakeview and 60, but not at, at Fairway and 60?
Yeah, this, this project doesn't include any improvements down at Fairway, so that wouldn't be part of this project's scope.
Right. But just in terms of layout, would it be difficult to add that? Can you tell?
No, I, I think you can definitely add pedestrian crossings down at Fairway, should that be the desire, you know, as part of a, a future improvement.
You'd have to establish a sidewalk, I would assume, on the north side of 60 right there, because there's no sidewalk that would connect that. I mean, ideally, if the mall is doing gangbusters, that's where you would put it on the mall side, right? On Fairway and 60, the south-northeast corner. Establish the side, because if you put, if you put a crosswalk from Fairway to 60, you're not connecting it to anything sidewalk-wise, yeah.
Correct. You know, I, that would, that would be a good idea. And it would provide benefit to extend it through the, to the north, right?
Agreed, and I, I agree that this board has done a good job as far as the mall expansion. Whenever there's opportunities to extend the sidewalk as part of an approval, we have been extending it. Our goal is to have a sidewalk along the north side of Route 60, extend it all the way to Fairway. Then we can have the conversations, how do we get people across Route 60? And that would be a separate project. And we do have, at the next meeting, will be our CIP discussions, and we can touch on items like that.
Okay, anything else?
So what's the timeframe for this, once it does get started?
So what, what'll happen if, for example, we achieve that January letting? IDOT normally takes 45 to 60 days to award the contract. And at that point, you know, the weather's still gonna be pretty questionable. So, but there could be some utility worth it that starts happening out there. That could even happen before the actual letting, if we have the right one, we have the right-of-way in place. But it, it gives a little bit of a cushion, like Dave mentioned, to get started as early as possible. So once the construction's underway, it's gonna take pretty much the full construction season to actually build out this, this project. The cost is about $5.7 million, so it's not an insignificant improvement. It'll be staged in a, in a manner where when they first, the first stage, they're gonna build the outside widening, and then they're gonna move. Once they've got that widening built, they'll shift traffic to the outside that they just built. And they'll, they'll focus on the interior part of the roadway, and then resurface everything in the end. But if, if it ends up moving to March, and it's a little bit later letting, it's really gonna feel about the same, I feel like, throughout the year. So there won't be a big difference in those two.
Okay. Anything else? If not, you don't need any action from us tonight. This is just an update, correct?
Just an update, sir.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's it for the Committee of the Whole tonight, correct?
That's all.
And no close session?
No, no close session this evening.
I move to adjourn. Second.
Motion is second to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you for coming.